All right, we're going to get started. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for City Council Ordinance 23-0381, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District Chair of the Committee, joined my right by Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee, and to my left, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Matt Peters, Staff to the Committee. We're also joined by Representatives of Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's office, also joined by Council President Nick Mosby. Sheriff Kogan, before we get started, for your folks that are testifying, when you are testifying, make sure you press down the button on the right so that the ring up here turns red. Your microphone will be on, please be sure to turn it off after, these mics are very sensitive. Sheriff Kogan, if you please introduce the senior members of your team that are here today to testify, first and last name and position, title, and then jump right into your presentation. I'm going to ask you to keep your presentation under seven or eight minutes. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Council President, and thank you to the council. I am Sheriff Sam Kogan. I have my Chief Deputy Joseph Whitaker here, Assistant Sheriff Lenore Dawson, Lieutenant Colonel Assistant Sheriff Thurman Reed, Kevin Hayes, the Chief of Staff, and our Chief Financial Officer Octavius Osment, who is here today. And so, getting it started and moving right into it, first of all, I not only want to introduce them, I want to thank them for the hard work they put into the presentation, and also the hard work that my command, who's here today, has done so we have things to put into this presentation to show what we've been doing for the six months that we've been in office. And so, we'll get started. So, next slide, please. All right, so, the priority objective of the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office is to reduce crime, protect members of the public, while recognizing the value, dignity, and humanity of all people. And so, when we formulated this budget presentation, what we wanted to do is we wanted to sort of categorize it in a way to show you where we're going and what we're doing with the money that you're entrusting with us to spend in a way that's going to help the public accomplish that agency mission. And so, we looked at the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, and we found that there's pillars of building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, officer training and education, and officer wellness. And so, those are like, when we look at our strategic goals, it's to become a 21st century policing agency that's following best practices. And so, this presentation will follow that, and you'll see in the slides, next slide, please. So, when building trust and legitimacy, our agency so far has worked with the state, local, and federal partners to include the judiciary, various law enforcement agencies, and I want to highlight the Maryland State Police, because we worked with the, and we are working with, at the time, it was the interim superintendent of State Police, and we're doing strategic planning with them. My command staff is doing strategic planning with them, and the sheriff's office is moving forward with a strategic plan that we're developing with the Maryland State Police, so we're looking at law enforcement best practices. So, we're building trust and legitimacy by really reaching out to members of the judiciary, members of the federal law enforcement agencies, our partners, people like the Public Defender's Office, and all the stakeholders, so that when we speak, we're speaking from a position of trust and authority, and that we're working with people in the city that are trying to reduce crime and make life better for everyone. Policy and Oversight. So, there were some issues that I think the council had with the previous administration that we had to fix right away, and that had to do with some evictions, issues. And so, the first thing that we did, I think it was the second day in office, is that we started posting individual doors on evictions and not posting common areas. The tenants can now call and receive their eviction dates from the sheriff's office, they're not referred to anyone else. We've started a rental fraud investigation unit that looks at landlords who are not licensed and filing court paperwork with fraudulent information to try to get them into compliance, and also to discourage people who don't have rental licenses and are renting unsafe property from utilizing the sheriff's office to do their evictions. And our office is also updating our general orders. When we came into office, we found that our general orders, which are rules and regulations, are outdated, and so, we're bringing in a company, Lexipol, to completely rewrite our general orders to best practices and national best practices, which would be CLIA. So, Technology and Social Media. The big joke is that we didn't have a computer on my desk until I got there, a lot of people say that to me, and we needed to change that around. Even though that was funny, it wasn't funny, and we walked into a situation where we really needed to build a technology platform in order to implement things that are incredibly important for trust building, like body cameras. You need a record management system to house information before you can put on a body camera to put information into that. And so, our staff has been working very, very, very hard in order to implement a technology program, and we've had some in the first six months accomplishments. We have, we're able to now write police reports without utilizing BPD paperwork, we can do our own, we can draw our own CC numbers, deputies are able to use their smartphones and take a picture of the summons they put on the door on the domestic violence unit and write a report right there on their phone and send it in for statistical purposes. When we deploy, we're able to write basic police reports using their smartphones, and that technology is something that we were light-years away from when we first got in, and we've really moved mountains to try to do that. Our dispatcher center that we have is now an operational center, and so, we're doing things like looking at the 911 feed around the courthouse, which we didn't have. So, if someone calls 911 and it's in the block away from the courthouse, we now know about that in the courthouse, we didn't have that technology before, and we're able to look at the cameras that we have at the courthouse and dispatch our deputies that are in the court facility to where the problem is, while the dispatcher is watching it on the camera. So, these are just some examples of some of the things that we've done with the technology, and we're moving forward with selecting a company to provide us with a records management system so we can begin to implement our body camera program. Next slide, please. We've also been, and again, I want to thank my command staff and all the deputy sheriffs who've been working hard on the weekends and in the evenings, we've been deploying on overtime most weekends and most evenings with a sense of urgency around the city to major events so that the sheriff's office can staff those events. And I'm not going to go through them, but this is a list, and you have it in your slides of just some of the events that we've been staffing. Next slide, please. So, Officer Training and Education. We walked into this, officers were trained at one level, we're asking them to perform at a higher level, we're asking them to help out with public safety within the city, and so, we're performing significant training. We have a training director and a captain who's assigned to training because training's a priority for us. We're training in courthouse security, people who are civilians were trained as special police officers to help out. Our Special Operations Division got crisis intervention training, so when they do what people were experiencing crisis, they're able to help them. Our Internal Affairs Group was sent for a best practices training, and on and on and on. Our deputies now know how to do radar and LIDAR so we can do traffic enforcement in the city, they got refresher in DWI enforcement so they can assist in that. This weekend, we'll be working with the Maryland State Police on a DWI track point in the city, I'm sure you guys will get announced to that. And our Intelligence Branch, which is trying to take information that we have and vet that to other law enforcement agencies, if we get something about a crime that's undiscovered, you know, has been working hard with best practices. And our Human Resources has been certified as retirement coordinators through the Maryland State Retirement Agency. So, there's been a lot of upgrading of training. Officer Safety and Wellness, we're looking at officer safety and wellness as a priority. It's something we walked into, there's no mental health program within the sheriff's office, there's no gym, there was no thoughts given to what our people are experiencing when they're seeing trauma themselves, and so, it's a priority for this budget to implement officer safety and wellness. And I'm going to try to speed through this as quickly as I can. Operational organizational chart is here, you guys can view that at your leisure, and now, we're talking about the different, the different things that you guys are funding. So, you're funding the Court Security Service, that's sort of self-explanatory, that's the protection of the two courthouses and the Juvenile Justice Center, and again, I talked about how we're doing that at a higher level. Some of you might have seen that we're seizing drugs that are being smuggled in in people's court clothing, and we've brought a canine dog in there because we can't allow that to happen. Each strip is selling for $100 in the jail and is being used as contraband and is being used as illegal currency, and we stopped a $27,000 seizure, we interdicted that, that was sewn into some jeans that was going to go right to an inmate just last week, and the day before that, it was $15,000 sewn into the jeans that was going to an inmate. So, we have to stop those kind of things. We think that our deputies, the better training and interdiction is resulting in these seizures. Next is Deputy Sheriff Enforcement. This is us going out and serving warrants, us doing foreclosures and different civil processes. Our warrant squad is one of the things we talked about, is now triple the size that it was when we took office. Some very, very dangerous people have violation of probation warrants associated with them, and the sheriff's office is out there making arrests. We can get you the statistics of how many people they've arrested since we've started this, but it's a significant amount and for very serious offenses. Service of Protective and Peace Orders. The sheriff's office took this service over from the police department, and so, this was a police service that the sheriff's deputies are doing. We go out there and serve all the restraining orders for interpersonal violence that are coming out in the city from North Avenue and from the Circuit Court, the ones that happen overnight, that are only good for a day, are still with the police department, everything else is with the sheriff's office. And so, that's very important that we do that, we do that effectively, so people who are suffering from interpersonal violence can get the relief that they need, and we can, we can protect them as they leave their dangerous relationship. It also allows us to seize firearms, if they have firearms, it also allows us to do some child custody things specifically, and this goes from both interpersonal violence and it goes also to peace orders, which are just for neighbor disputes and other kinds of restraining orders. Next slide, please. So, one of the things we found is that we had deputy sheriffs going out, and they were serving a summons for a district court matter, and then a child support deputy that was assigned to the child support unit was going to the same block to serve a summons, and we felt that was inefficient. And so, you'll see that district court services and child support enforcement has now been merged for efficiencies, and we've been tracking to make sure that with the child support service that we didn't lose anything in that transfer, and we have not. We're serving at the same rate that we did before, or even sometimes at a higher rate, but we're using less personnel in that section so we're not being duplicating services, and we've been able to put the people we talked about into the warrant group so that they're not going to the same block. So, that's what we're doing there, that's the evictions. We talked about how we've upgraded our evictions so that we're doing it in a better way. I want to stop right here and say that we're, right now, in the process of reclassifying the social workers that we're going to have, and we look at, we think we found who we're going to use as our chief social worker to implement this program, and that person will help us write a program where we'll bring on three other social workers, and at the time of eviction, they're going to do a need survey, and then the deputy is going to be able to contact the social workers in the office to connect them with the city services that are being funded and the other services that are available. So, I'm super excited about that, that's something I don't think anyone's doing in the country, and will be the first city to do something like that I'm aware of, and that will go with the district court services. Some new programs, court security, we've been doing patrol outside of the building. Court security isn't just about inside the building, it's outside of the building too. For example, we've issued 291 tickets outside of the building since we've taken office. Parking is a huge problem, illegal parking is a huge problem, and some of these are moving violations for reckless driving. We talked about the court clothing policy, where we're finding things, and we have a new policy that's allowing lawyers to bring court clothing in the night before, that the sheriff's office will take on the responsibility of safeguarding and then getting to the jail, and that's going to allow court cases to start on time so that a defendant doesn't have to bring in those clothing. Next one is field services, and we talked about the posting and what we're doing in order to help with evictions, the problems that this body had last time that we fixed. Special Operations, next slide, can you go to that? So, the Special Operations Group has made, since we took office, has made 76 warrant arrests, placed six detainers on people who are in jail, and cleared 17 warrants, and these are for serious violation of probation warrants. And I can take any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. We sent you a letter on May 19 requesting a written response by June 2. You sent that response to us, I want to thank you for the comprehensive response to our letter. We asked you a number of questions around staffing, around deployments to assist BPD. It was very clear to me that your agency not only took the letter seriously and responded in a very comprehensive and thoughtful manner, but it is clear from what is in the letter, the work that you all have been doing over the past six months to support our community through special events. It was very refreshing to see, knowing that there is a concentration of events in the downtown area, that those efforts were spread out across the entire city, so I want to thank you for that, and also, thank you for the proactive steps that you've been taking to hire up and fill vacancies, and of course, last but not least, stepping in to assist BPD in their efforts where they have been unable to provide complete coverage, so I want to thank you for that. I have no questions. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Real quick, you kind of briefly talked about the body camera program, could you talk to us about the schedule, expectations, when you plan to have everything in place?
Sure. So, we feel by the end of this year, we're going to have a records management system. So, right now, we don't have a Baltimore Sheriff's Office records management system where we put everything that we write into and we're able to get things out of that, everything from like the employee's equipment to police reports that we may write, so that has to be first. And in order to do that, again, I think it's probably going to take the remainder of the year to get that implemented. Once that's done, we're looking at two vendors, we're looking at Axon and we're looking at Motorola, those are the two vendors that I'm aware of that handle the body camera footage. I know the city is mostly gone with Axon, but we want to independently evaluate them and make sure that that's who we want to go with before we select a body camera program. But, you know, I think there's a, I think we have two years to roll that out legally, and we want to, we first have to get that records management system in before we can even think about implementing the body camera system.
When you say the two-year legal requirement, what pushes that?
State legislation.
Says that now you're required...
Yes, sorry, all policing agencies have to have a body camera in by that timeframe.
Got you. When we talk about interoperability between yourself and the Baltimore Police Department, why wouldn't we just go with the same vendor so we could? I mean, I think some of the problems, particularly from an IT and systems perspective in our city, is we have so many different fractures, particularly as it relates to intelligence, you know, why wouldn't we just go down the same path that has already been chosen by BPD?
Right, it's a great question, right? We may do that, but we have to independently evaluate it, because the way that the Baltimore Police Department is using it, it's different than us. I can give like one example, so our deputies have Taycom cars, a lot of them, and so, we're going to want them to take the body camera with them and store it in their house, so that's one aspect of it. It's also, if you look at Axon, it's an open, it's a closed API, so we need to make sure that that's going to integrate with what we have, and we just want to make sure that we're getting the best product, and that always changes, and so, while Baltimore City Police picked what's good for them, and they have the contract for that, we want to be viewed as an independent person who's buying this, and we want to make sure that we're getting the best product for the sheriff's office. So, everything that you said is going to be factored into this decision, which it should, but we just have to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and don't just get that because the police have it, we get it because it's the best product and the police have it.
Got it, appreciate that. Now, when we talk about timing on this, what do you expect the timing to be like?
So, we're looking into it now, so again, records management system comes first, so we have the base platform. We really walked into no technology, things were still being done on like Excel spreadsheets and just stored on individual computers, so it's going to take us a minute to get up to speed on that. So, I would say, again, by the end of this year, we should have our solid foundation that we could put the body camera program on top of.
So, this will probably be a fiscal '25 request?
Probably, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Dorsey, then Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for being here, Mr. Sheriff. I understand that it was MDOT or MTA asked for assistance with bus lane enforcement, is that who asked?
Yeah, we met with them, we met with the MTA, because there was a request, a citizen request for us to do bus lane, and they said have at it, you know, and wanted to also work in partnership with us to enforce bus lanes in the city.
How many man-hours are you able to dedicate to that in a typical week, do you think?
So, it would depend, so if they're having a specific initiative, and if the initiative falls on hours that court isn't in session, we can definitely deploy significant resources to that. We can also individually train our deputies that are riding in marked cars and are supposed to be enforcing the law to pay special attention to that, which is what we're going to be doing anyway. We sort of have done that.
And along the same line, has the City Department of Transportation ever asked for assistance, similar assistance with bike lane enforcement?
No.
If they were to ask, you would be able to allocate a similar amount of time, I would assume, to, and focus on paying attention?
Yeah, we would evaluate that request and help out if we, if it was possible, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But to be clear, you've never been asked.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, I just want to thank you for your leadership and all the work that you and your team are doing. It is refreshing to see a law enforcement agency like the Sheriff's Department acting like one, and being a part of every law enforcement conversation that's going on. When we see all the agencies always coordinating in the past, the sheriff's office was never really involved in the crime fight, and so, just appreciate your leadership and bringing your team in to the crime fight. It's not something that's been done before, but we certainly need it, so thank you.
Thank you, and I also just want to also extend that to the staff that I have here and also the deputies that are putting in the hard work to make that happen, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes, then Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank Mr. Hayes, Chief of Staff, I know you were looking for some more employment, this guy been right on it, thank you. Sheriff, I mean, he wasn't a sheriff, but I can say, in that office, y'all were still helping with fighting crime during, before you assumed the position. My question is, are your deputies still underpaid?
Yes.
I think y'all the lowest paid law enforcement probably in the state of Maryland.
Yeah, in fact, it's something that I didn't get to, but it is important. The deputy sheriff's earning about 20% less than Baltimore Police Department does, and that, that's highly problematic for us, and it's one of the things that we are going to work very, very hard to try to change, because we need to be able to recruit qualified people and retain the hardworking people that we have. And there's no reason that they should get paid 20% less than the Baltimore Police Department, particularly when I'm sending them out to do Baltimore Police Department work and assisting them.
Especially when you work in these dangerous communities, so I think that's something we as the committee for a budget, put in a budget. These guys been doing this for a long time, and I done talked to them before, and we have not moved on to make sure that they get paid just like anybody else, but they doing a dangerous job. My other question is, I guess about eight months ago, I was able to get a business owner to buy 22 bicycles for three police districts in my district, and you know, Sheriff, I just asked you, why y'all don't have bicycles? That's the relationship with the community that's getting out of the car, because a lot of times, you can't see what's going on riding down the street in a car. So, I did mention this to some of my colleagues, we need to see how we can get y'all some bicycles over there, maybe about 10 Trek bicycles, so your officers can build the relationship with the community also, so that's all I wanted to say, but I really want to push out the bicycles and the raise for our deputy sheriffs because they really work hard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Sheriff and to your team, we greatly do, you know, just to piggyback on some of my colleagues, I appreciate what you guys do each and every day. I know in my community, when we're really short of officers, you guys are present at some of the corners of my neighborhood, and we have seen a dramatic change in crime in our neighborhood, and trust me, our constituents do call, and they let us know that you guys are out there. So, it would be a great help, like Councilman Stokes just said, that we can help provide you guys with bicycles and give you guys the wages that you guys truly deserve, and just to see you guys out in public, the way that you are, I mean, at community events, staffing and helping with other agencies, is really, really like a big deal to me, because it shows how individually, how we can all do great things, but collectively, how we can really come together as a city and make a change. So, again, thank you guys for the work that you're doing, and again, just kudos to all you guys, you did great work.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, and again, I'd like to, again, thank the deputies because you're really talking to them, they're the ones who are putting in the hard work and working at night on the weekends after they get done their regular shift, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good to see you, Sheriff, to you and your team. Let's see, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the, you had a slide about training, and when we, when you first came in, we had a pretty informal conversation about the training for all the sheriffs on human trafficking, and so, wanted to see if that's something that we could add into the curriculum, is working with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety, Tom Stack has done training for fire, EMS, BPD, any other agency that'll, liquor board. We've been trying to check as many boxes as we can to have that sort of formal training in place, and just wanted to see if we could work with the sheriff's office as well on that.
Absolutely, we will have that this year. My training director's here, I believe he already spoke to someone in reference to that.
Okay, and also, so it's good to hear, and then, I guess the second one B on that is just a representative that would join the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative. We have a law enforcement subcommittee that has representatives from all of the local agencies that meet on a monthly basis to share best practices, case information, et cetera, et cetera, and it'd be great to have the sheriff's office there.
Yeah, we'll be there, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nate, can you add that to the list? Sheriff, if you could designate someone by the end of this month, is that reasonable? Councilman Burnett?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Name someone and get that person connected with Councilman Burnett.
Absolutely.
Got it, Nate, you got that? Thank you, sir. Councilman Cohen.
Hey, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate the work that your team does, both want to lift up the good work that my colleagues mentioned around engaging the crime fight and being a more proactive partner, but also what you've been doing around evictions, and just a more thoughtful, humane approach, and, you know, definitely appreciate the piece around social workers and the need to be trauma-informed, because it is one of the most traumatizing processes, especially for children and for older adults that exists, so thank you for all that. I also concur with my colleague, Councilman Stokes, around the need for better pay parity between the sheriffs and BPD, and I wonder, I don't know if anyone from the City Administrator's Office is here, but if the folks from finance, is that part of the analysis that we're doing on pay? Are we specifically looking at sheriff's deputies? Because when I hear 20% less than BPD, and knowing that these folks are also putting their lives on the line, are also entering incredibly hostile and potentially dangerous situations, that just doesn't feel right to me. So, is that, are we taking a look in our overall analysis at the disparity between what we're paying the police department and our sheriffs?
So, I can't say for certain if the, if the current salary studies that we were referencing earlier today, if that includes public safety or not, that's something I can circle back with colleagues at HR. One thing I will say is that we are in year, fiscal '24 will be year two of a three-year contract with the, with the labor union that represents the sheriff's office, so that contract will go through fiscal '25 and will negotiate again with the sheriff's office union, starting as we plan for fiscal '26.
Go ahead.
And just to piggyback what you're saying, that is correct, however, wages and salary is not, it's not bargained at this point, there's a, and the state law provides that the mayor has the same control over the salaries of the sheriff's office as any other municipal agency. So, wages and salaries are not part of the contract that we've benefited, and that piece also exists as well.
So, I'd like to make a request for the administration that we do either include in the current staffing salary analysis, the sheriff's department, or do a separate analysis and to specifically look at the disparity, because one of the things I notice about our sheriff's deputies is that I think they are, at a higher rate, they live in Baltimore, is that correct?
I believe it's over half live in Baltimore City.
Yeah, a lot of the folks that I've met on the streets are Baltimore natives, grew up here, live, still live here, and I think that's really important, and I think, again, we need to be supporting this branch of law enforcement just as much as any other. So, could we include that as a committee request, that either it be part of the overall staffing analysis or a separate study?
Yeah, we, I'll certainly follow up with HR. I will say that the existing study is already underway, and we're under contract for that, so I don't know what we'll be able to do in terms of adding scope to it, but I'll definitely coordinate with Director Herbert so that we can provide a response on that item. on that item.
Okay. That would be great and would appreciate maybe within the next four to six weeks, at least the start of an analysis on pay disparity.
Yep, I, well, I will, we'll, I'll coordinate with Director Herbert in terms of what's feasible on that end, in terms of what's, you know, potentially within the realms of the existing study, and then what's realistic for them to implement something different.
Okay.
If needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you, Sheriff and your team. You did everything we asked you to do right away, so I'm really grateful. I wanted to just follow up on the rental frog task force that you had mentioned that, so you're doing research to see if the paperwork that you're getting, if the person is licensed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then what, how are you moving that forward? I guess that's what the task force is going to figure out?
Yeah, so it's actually difficult because once we identify if the person is licensed or not, we really have to check with Housing and Community Development to make sure that they weren't grandfathered in, or that the paperwork isn't stalled, or it wasn't, you know. So we have to check with them, so it's a very burdensome process. But we are looking for, and I'll say this, we are looking for the unscrupulous landlords that are breaking the law, that don't have rental licenses, that are falsifying court documents and submitting them and making false statements in reference to evictions. And so the person we have looking at is looking to criminally charged people who are doing that, or looking to see if they can be fined through Housing and Community Development. Because we want to send a message that you can't perjure yourself and break laws and then expect the law enforcement agency to come out and enforce the law on your behalf.
So you're basically finding the, you're finding trends through this work, and you know, you'll either have to get permission from the General Assembly to do a couple of things, or let us know what kinds of things that we need to change in order to make, you know. Obviously, we have a sense of what it is because we hear it all the time from our constituents.
Right.
But it sounds like you're getting the actual data.
Right. And, and the other thing is, we also don't want the deputies to go into an eviction situation with blinders on. So if they see a very egregious housing violation, or they see the law being broken, we want them, they're not just there for the landlord, they're there for the state, and they're there to enforce the law. And so that goes equally to everybody. And so there's many, many great landlords who do, do good work, and there's some very unscrupulous people who are doing criminal activity by even renting the property sometimes and putting people, and putting families in harm's way. And so it's the sheriff's office that's going to try to root that out.
Great. I hope that we can get a report of some sort at the end of the year. You know, I'm going to give you some time because you just started this. To really see what's, what's going on and if there are repeaters, which I would imagine there are, to be able to do an enforcement action. Because we had just had a conversation with DHCD, and when we talked about enforcement action, there really wasn't anything there. So we're going to have to have that, that piece of it. Because just losing the license, especially if these people aren't even licensed, isn't going to work, right?
Right.
So your data is going to be very critical. So thank you.
Thank you. At the end of the day, it's about, we don't want kids to get lead paint poisoned within these homes because they're not doing an inspection and there is lead paint. And then there, there are things we could do to prevent that. That, that's the bottom line when it comes to this kind of...
Right. So you're more, you're not just looking at rental assistance, I meant, whether they're licensed, you're actually looking at all the violations.
Right.
That's great.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? Oh, sorry, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, on this eviction piece, are you all currently evicting tenants where there is no rental license when there is a court order in place to do the eviction still? Like, I guess if that's already been issued, are you, happens in that situation?
Yeah, so, so we can only bring that to the attention of the court. And if the court directs us to do it otherwise, we would be, I would be held in contempt, and the city would be immersed for the judgment on there. So I have to avoid directly going against a judicial order. But we bring that, that information to people's attention, and then the court has to adjudicate that. And I think there was some state legislation that's going to go into effect that's going to impact this as well.
Okay. And just really quick, who's the best point of contact if we wanted to request presence from your office at like a community event of some sort?
That would be me, Kevin Hayes.
We'll be in touch. Thank you.
And if you don't mind, that's, that's for the whole council, if you want to get us to a community meeting or out into the community for something as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes, then Glover.
Sheriff, are you working closely with the courthouse? And like, I work, I sit on a board where we, family services who, who have money to help people before they become evicted here in the city. So do you work closely with those other organizations? I know y'all issue the evictions, but are you working closely with them organizations that help them with their evictions?
So the answer is, we are working with them, but not where we should be, which is why we're implementing the social work program, because that will be their, their core goal to make those connections. Because it's not just to help people after they've been evicted. If there's rental assistance and people need assistance that way, or there's something going on, we need to do that on the front end as well. The sheer volume, though, of the evictions makes that difficult, which is why we need a special program for that.
Thank you. Councilman Glover.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So like, in Baltimore City Police Department, I know we're short like 500 officers. Are you guys short in any way in the sheriff's department? And if so, how many officers have you guys lost prior to your administration? And when you got on, are you still losing officers, or you hiring more officers? What's that like?
So I'm going to turn that over to our HR, Assistant Sheriff, who's in charge of HR. That's not all she does, Lenora Dawson, to answer that question.
Hi, thank you. So yes, we are still currently short of deputy sheriffs as well as court security officers. We have actually hired a recruiter to help us kind of go out and recruit and get young people. And even, the sheriff has been very creative in terms of bringing folks before the age of 21 who want to eventually get into the academy. So we've started a cadet program for folks to come in, to work as civilians, get to see what that's like, work on the doors, check bags, and even do some liquor board work as well. And once they reach the age of 20 and a half, going to 21, then they can go into the academy and start their law enforcement career. But I can tell you, it has been a struggle. And the biggest issue has been salary for us. We're just not competitive in any way whatsoever. And even trying to recruit laterals coming over, it's the, the only hurdle I see for us. Because a lot of folks see the sheriff's office as a great place to work in law enforcement because typically during the week, they're not working late hours and have to be on third shift and things like that. So we're being a little creative, but I will tell you, if we could possibly get pay parity for the deputies, that that would definitely mitigate that problem.
So can you just give me like a guess, like, how many are you losing?
How many are we losing?
Are you short?
I can kind of give you an estimate in terms of, we're probably about 25, short 25 deputies at minimum right now in court security officers. I can't give you a number offhand, but I, offhand, but I know it's certainly over 30.
Okay. Mr. Chair, for direct, you can just send over some information for them to send back to us, exactly how many they're short.
Are we talking about what was included in the letter, or are we...
So it was the sheriffs and also the support staff.
Okay, I think the letter just had the sheriffs in it, so we just need the support staff? Is that correct?
Well, so in terms of requesting a pay parity for the deputies?
No, I think, I think you're asking us to provide you a list of all the vacancies we have in what areas?
Oh, sure.
More than happy to do that.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, so you already did that for the sworn side. If you could do that for the non-sworn side.
Yes.
And then, do you need anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Related to that? You're good? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Crystal, one clarifying note, the 46 vacant positions for the sheriff's office, that's sworn and civilian. So that is everything currently.
Okay. Councilman, I'm going to send over the letter to you right now so you have it. Excellent. Colleagues, any other, oh, Chief Hayes?
To answer the question earlier, for the sheriff's security, sheriff's security division, there are 18 vacancies right now for the sheriff deputy division. There are 16 vacancies for the sheriff district court division slash child support division. There are eight vacancies, and for the domestic violence unit, there are four vacancies.
Colleagues, any other questions? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff, I've obviously called on your office for many things. The most recent thing has been this horrific challenge that we have in the stony run for unleashed dogs on the trail. And I'm really grateful to Major Brackett, who's spent a lot of time there. My understanding is that you do actually have citation powers, correct?
That's correct.
To be able to issue citations to those that are violating the law?
Correct.
And we hope to see that on the stony run and hopefully that it makes a difference. I really appreciate the time that you're spending there.
Yeah, so our canine dogs have to be exorcised? And what we found is, rather than exorcise them in an off-site facility, we bring them to area parks around the city, and they can do some enforcement while they're there. And it kills two birds with one stone.
That's perfect. That's great. Well, we posed this to Wreckin Parks, they're doing, in the next six to eight weeks, they're coming up with a off-leash dog plan. And I encourage them to reach out to you so that you can be a part of that.